Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016. If you would, I'd like to call a meeting to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again. Ted, if you would, please read the role.
Sure. Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landmark here. Sumitane Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. And if, for approval of the agenda, if I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries. Acknowledgements of Contributions. Now, this is a resolution. If I could get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Molly wins. All right, I'll read it and then open it for discussion. Acknowledgements of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school wards to receive, for the benefit of the district, bequests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $30,126.03. And the detailed background is, a donation of $64 was made to Valley View by the Valley View PTO for family night expenses. A donation of $1,796.79 was made to Valley View Elementary by Target Take Charge of Education for Student Needs. A donation of $95.70 was made to North Park Elementary by the Benevity Community Impact Fund for Student Needs. A donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Academy by Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club for the Spanish Field Trip to Concordia Language School. A donation of $5,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club for softball field improvements. A donation of $3,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by BAE PNS for 2016 First Robotics Registration. And a donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Medtronics for the 2016 First Robotics Registration. A donation of $200 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for the Strikers Soccer Supplies. A donation of $1,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for Wrestling Warm-Ups. A donation of $1,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for Girls' Basketball Jerseys and Shorts. A donation of $400 was made to Columbia Heights High School by the Italian-American Club for Activity Supplies. A donation of $70 was made to Valley View Elementary by Kyle Puerto Rico for Student Needs. A donation of $70 was made to Valley View Elementary by Lisa Mora for Student Needs. A donation of $250 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Financial One Credit Union for Art Program. A donation of $500 was made to Columbia Academy by Amanda Moll for the Moll Family Memorial. A $500 donation was made to Highland Elementary by Thompson Rutter Corporation for Student Needs. A donation of $1,000 was made to North Park Elementary by Friendly Chevrolet Pay-It Forward Program for Student Needs. A donation of $4,000 was made to Valley View Elementary by Valley View PTO for Laminator and Chrome Books. A donation of $90 was made to Highland Elementary by DonorsChoose.org for books for third grade. And the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Scholarship Fund. Amy and Joy Appfell, $200. James and Mary Appfell, $150. NIUM Technology Solutions Incorporated, $3,200. Lori and John Mullin, $50. Sherry Carr, $25. Stephen and Karen Wolgimott, $1,000. Karen and Craig Spencer, $25. And Jane Leopold, $1,000. Value and Kind, donation of Boom Whackers to North Park Elementary by Linda Smith for Student Needs, estimated value of $60. Donation of Pants to Valley View Elementary by Lori Kaplan for Student Needs, estimated value of $30. Donation of Art Supplies to Highland Elementary by DonorsChoose.org for kindergarten art class, estimated value of $125.17. Donation of Clothing and Shoes to Columbia Heights High School by Erin and Matthew Schreier for Student Needs, estimated value of $250. Donation of Boom Whackers to Valley View Elementary by Linda Smith for Students in Need, estimated value of $43.67. Donation of Hats, Gloves, Mittens, and Scars to Valley View Elementary by Sheridan Story for Health Office, estimated value of $835. You gotta say, if I'm gonna run out of breath reading, that's the right thing to be reading when I run out of breath, so. Total fiscal 2015-16 monetary contributions to date, $53,622.03. Discussion.
Well, I can't help but comment how generous. I mean, this is amazing. This is what our community is all about, so, thank you so much.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Ted, if you would, please read the role.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Landmark, aye.
Thank you. Moving along is Discussion Reports and Information Items. Reports from members of the Board. Board members will report on Board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Natty, you wanna go first?
Yeah.
Please.
Last week, I attended the eighth-grade boys' basketball games at the middle school. I also attended the boys' varsity basketball game on Friday night, which was senior night and also fun because the middle school pep band got to join the high school students in playing the pep band, which was pretty exciting. And I had further training at the district office last week also.
Thank you. Molly?
Yes, I was also at the varsity basketball game and junior varsity basketball games last week. I wanna comment on, I went to the Unified Basketball Tournament yesterday that the Columbia Academy students put on, or the teachers put on for those students. And what that is, is unified athletics are a combination of some typical kids and then special needs kids, so there was teams of about, kinda split half and half. And it was really exciting to see all of the students, not just the special needs students, but the other children enjoyed it a lot. It was a really good, good day for all of them. I think there was probably about 50 students there, and our teams did very well. They brought home three trophies. They placed in first at the tournament. And like I said, the teamwork and the cooperation and the skills that were learned yesterday were incredible, so kudos to the staff down there for taking part in that and getting that going. Also talked to several parents and community members over the past couple weeks. That's it.
Ted?
I just came from the WMAP, West Metro Educational Partnership Executive Committee Meeting, and I forgot to mention last week that I attended a Chamber Legislative Summit, which one of the focuses was on developing workforce. So, the Chamber has been trying to get various legislators together. We found out that they tend to stay in their own little silos, and they don't really get together as we would hope they would, and so this was a good step forward, and there was a lot of interest about workforce development in the role of K-12 in that regard, so, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Laura?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Just real quickly, I had the opportunity to sit down last Thursday, I think it was, in governance training with Member Severson, and reinforcing, just really happy to have you onboard. I also attended part of the basketball game Friday night, the chair meeting prior to this, and I was at the high school band concert last night, and I know I sound like a broken record when I say it, but the kids just continue to amaze me, you know, when they perform the middle school, it was a month ago, and the high school last night, so it's really fun and exciting to see the kids growing, so. And that's my report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair and Members, I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Caught you off air, didn't we? We're ready for you, I think. Yep. Next up is Integration Achievement Report. Xena will be presenting on information on the integration and achievement report being developed.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, I am here this evening to present information on the Achievement and Integration Grant for the upcoming school year. The mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation will focus on the core values of excellence, collaboration, and integrity. So, the purpose of achievement and integration in Minnesota is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and to reduce academic disparities based on diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in Minnesota public schools. So this is additional funding for qualifying districts from the state of Minnesota. And it's based on the Minnesota State Statute, Section 124D .861 and 862. So, when the World's Best Workforce came along in 2013, we really, as a state and different districts, added or combined, needed to combine the World's Best Workforce work along with achievement and integration, all so that we're heading towards college and career readiness. So as you can see, the achievement and integration, as I mentioned before, is funded. Some of the specific goals are to cut the achievement gap in half by 2017, to increase the integration of our schools, and it requires a three-year district plan and then also an annual budget. So we're in the third year, we'll be entering the third year of our three-year plan. We are able to amend that plan each year, and this year, included in your packet, you see the amendments to the plan, they're highlighted in yellow in your board packet, and basically the changes are due to the changes with WMAP in our district. World's Best Workforce, the purposes are to increase college and career readiness for all students, and we also require an annual report, as you know, on student achievement. And so we work on both of the goals with both of those programs. So, integration-funded programming that supports college and career readiness, so what is in the integration grant that supports college and career readiness specifically? So, part of it is direct student support, and you'll see in your packet that we're required to use about, or not about, exactly 80% or more of the funds for direct student support. We are projecting that we'll use over 85% towards direct student programming. So what's in that? Avid programming, so the instructional pieces, teachers, academic counselor, early college support for ninth graders and 10th graders coming up, ramp-up, which is an advisory program that talks to not just kids in Avid, but all the kids in the high school about being prepared for college and what are the steps that you need to take, so we wanna make sure we're reaching all of our kids. Our cultural and urban liaisons that support students and families, interpretive services, again, that support students and families, and our different interventions. And of course, some are opportunities that we spoke about at our last meeting. In addition, another category in integration that supports college and career readiness is professional development, that's tied to Avid, creating a culture of academics and equity. And then this year, because of some of the changes, we are looking at tapping into some of the à la carte offerings that, for professional development that are offered by Emid, so that would be not as a member, but we're able to participate in some of the professional developments that they offer. So let's look at the budget. What's in the budget in the three categories? So you can see, it's just over a million dollars. So the direct student support, as I mentioned, it's about 85% of that funding is going directly to support our students in many of the areas that I listed. Professional development, there you can see, at about $63,000. Some of the, some of the changes from last year, it's higher in direct student support. Part of that is, we're increasing the early college programming for our students, so from ninth grade to 10th grade, we've increased Avid support across the district in every building starting next year. So those are some of the increases there. The decrease, there's a decrease in professional development. That doesn't mean that professional development for our teachers will decrease just out of this fund, and that's because of the WMAP fee. It wouldn't be there any longer. And then administration is about the same. Now, we're obligated to maintain the professional development and administration portions combined cannot be over 20%, and we're well under that. And then the administration can't be over 10%, and again, we're well under that. We're really focusing on the direct student support. So for the professional development, you can see, supporting our teachers and our staff with learning about Avid for Avid implementation, creating our culture, positive learning climates and culture of academics through responsive classroom and developmental designs, learning about behavior interventions, college and career readiness equity, and then, as I mentioned before, the opportunity to participate in some of the Emid offerings without being a member. So some of the changes from the grant last year to this year, there are very few changes that we're proposing for this grant. So I've mentioned, we're adding Avid, adding early college from one grade to two, the deletion of the WMAP fees and dues, and then the addition of professional development through, the options through Emid that we would have. So after today, the next steps are, I will come back March 8th, bring forward an action item to you. The grant itself needs to be signed and submitted by March 15th. And then in late spring, we will be notified from the Department of Education of the approval or any need for changes. Are there any questions?
Did MDE require any changes from us last year?
Where's Principal Burkas when I need him? No. So I can speak to this year, that this year, we have been working with Department of Education to make the amendments for that three-year plan, based on changes with WMAP. If, I can tell you that our budget and our plan was approved last year, and so if there were any changes, they were made and approved and would have been minor. We've had the integration funding for quite a long time.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is it, I mean, it looks really good, so I'm just wondering what kind of a monkey wrench they like to throw into it, so.
I have a comment on that, and that is, many times the integration grants are not approved in other districts, but we've been very lucky in that writing and working collaboratively with MDE to see what their appetite was for the initiatives that we would be presenting in advance. And so we have been very lucky in that they've always been approved. It's always come back in the last few years with a strong suggestion that we collaborate with neighboring districts that have a higher proportion of Caucasian students in them, and we did that last year, and we're doing that again this year.
I don't call that luck, I call that being prepared.
Yeah. I did attend, MDE offered a guiding session for achievement and integration to write the grant, so I did attend that to make sure that we were following everything that we needed to follow and comply with that, so.
Any other questions?
So what's the timeframe? How long would it take for us to know if MDE is approving it or not?
We'll know in the spring.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So that's well enough time to adjust if we need to?
Yes.
Okay. If WMAP, as you say, is written out of the integration plan, then that, that pretty much closes any chance of us ever rejoining WMAP. Is that correct?
For this year.
For this year, okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will be looking at the 2016-2017 school calendar. Nicole.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for having me here this evening. It usually is one of the coldest days of the year, and I'm here to present the following year. This year, not so much, although the first meeting that we had as a committee was very, very cold, and we were talking about spring breaks and summers, and. So this is the 16-17 school year. The state of Minnesota requires that school boards approve a calendar for the next school year. We have a committee that is comprised of parents and staff members at every building and every level, as well as directors, community ed activity. We look at the charges from the superintendent, we look at the law as far as what days we have to have on and off. We work with HR on contractual obligations, so even though it appears that it's very easy to throw together a beautiful calendar, it's tricky because we have to consider so many things, as well as the sentiments of the families in our community and the staff. And first, of course, putting children and trying to avoid some critical testing dates for days off. So what you have in front of you will be brought to the next board meeting. The first day of school being proposed would be the day after Labor Day, September 6th. You can see a winter break in there, a spring break in there, and then legal holidays, district in-service days, and the last day of school would be, for students, would be June 8th, and staff would be done on June 9th, which works out nicely because summer academy then comes in, moves in that weekend, and starts on the 13th.
Questions?
Questions? So is there enough time, then, would you say, with this calendar, to prepare students for the testing, the MCAs and so forth?
Right. So they give us a window of time, and what I know Xena has said, pretty much it's all year long now, testing is going on. It used to be, remember, back in the day when it was a couple weeks in April, but we, you know, we try to work around activities and testing as much as we possibly can to give the days off, and make the quarters and the semesters even for high school students where they need their semesters fairly balanced.
So we're not having a number of days off right before testing?
Correct.
That sort of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for your hard work.
Yeah, thanks.
You'll be bringing this back?
Next board meeting for approval.
March, okay. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to our action items, and first up is the revised 2015-2016 budget, presented by Mr. Holmroth.
Chair Larkin, Members of the School Board, I'm Superintendent Kelly. Two weeks, you know, it was just last week we talked about this. We went through a little more detail, but I'll just briefly run back through the budget. Again, we talked about our mission already this evening, but we are here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and that budget is definitely built around that. When we talk about our budget, we're really talking about community, excellence, collaboration, and integrity. I put this, I put this handout in your packet, there's a little more detail in it and a little easier to see than what's up on the screen. But when we talk about our revised budget, when we get to the time of the year, what we've done is we've inserted actual employees back in June when you first approved our budget. We had a lot of estimates where we had, trying to, we didn't know exactly who was gonna be working for us at that time, you know, with the turnover we have and retirement and so forth, and so we take our best guess at that time. Of course, we've adjusted all revenues to our current enrollment, and, you know, any positions that were hired were definitely under very careful review before that was taken. The big things that changed from last June till now, of course, is WMAP. Because WMAP no longer runs buildings, the, what happened in the past is, we had students from our district that went to WMAP, and what happened is, we still accounted for them in our system, and then we paid tuition to WMAP for the students. Now that they're open enrolled students either in Minneapolis or in Robbinsdale, the money goes directly to those buildings or those districts. So we will get less dollars overall because we have less students that we're counting. And that's about 272,000 less in total revenue from the first budget that we talked about back in June. A couple other notable things that have happened are, after the legislative session finished, if you remember, it finished kinda late last spring, and we had our budget all ready to you. Compensatory dollars actually increased by 230,000. So that was great news for us, it was dollars that we didn't anticipate. Another thing that we had to make an adjustment for, if you remember, last year, the ALC that we are the host for, for District 916, the number of students that we had budgeted for were a lot, were much more than what actually attended. So that, again, we're gonna see a decrease in our revenue, but of course, we see also a decrease in the expenditures for those students, so it's just less. And then if you remember, we did get another percent of state aid that we didn't anticipate at the end of the legislative session, so that was about 277,000. And of course, one bigger expenditure that's happened this year, of course, is we've had to run a couple extra elections, and just so you know, that's about $30,000 that we had to put into the revised budget. So now, when we look at the revised budget, overall, our unassigned, which is the first line on the budget sheet that you have, we are down about 272,000 from last June. These are the dollars that are available to the district for general education of students. When we look at the restricted side, that's where all capital dollars are, that's where all the title dollars are, that's where all our grant money, and we just talked about integration, those are all in that $12 million. When we look at food service, we're seeing a little bit of an increase, I think, in our, actually, I think this will be a little bigger, as we're working through the first year with SEDEXO, we're seeing some nice efficiencies, and I think we're gonna see a little bit more of an increase there. But to be conservative, we're gonna leave these dollars in. And then community ed also is having a good year. They actually got some extra, and I shouldn't say extra, it's not extra money, but some new money last spring, ended the legislative session, so we're seeing a little bit excess in that fund of $85,000. Building fund, this is the first year that we're in with our new capital projects levy. You can see that a million dollars is coming in. At this point, we're only spending, what, 900,000 of that in this year, that rest of that'll carry over into next year. Debt service, you see that fund balance actually dropping a little bit, but what, the reason that happens every year is the legislature allows us to levy 105% of what our actual payments are. That way, if someone doesn't make their payments, we still have enough cash to make the bond payments. So that excess that happens, that we don't use, we always give that back, and you're seeing that 30,000 is going back to our taxpayers. A flex account, you see there, that money for our employees that we run through. thousand from last June. These are the dollars that are available to the district for general education of students. When we look at the restricted side, that's where all capital dollars are, that's where all the title dollars are, that's where all our grant money, and we just talked about integration, those are all in that twelve million dollars. When we look at food service, we're seeing a little bit of an increase, I think, in our, actually, I think this will be a little bigger, as we're working through the first year with SEDEXO, we're seeing some nice efficiencies. I think we're gonna see a little bit more of an increase there, but to be conservative, we're gonna leave these dollars in. And then community ed also is having a good year. They actually got some extra, and I shouldn't say extra, it's not extra money, but some new money last spring, end of the legislative session, so we're seeing a little bit excess in that fund of eighty-five thousand dollars. Building fund, this is the first year that we're in with our new capital projects levy. You can see that a million dollars is coming in. At this point, we're only spending, what, nine hundred thousand of that in this year, that rest of that'll carry over into next year. Debt service, you see that fund balance actually dropping a little bit, but what, the reason that happens every year is the legislature allows us to levy a hundred and five percent of what our actual payments are. That way, if someone doesn't make their payments, we still have enough cash to make the bond payments. So that excess that happens that we don't use, we always give that back, and you're seeing that thirty thousand's going back to our, our taxpayers. Flex account, you see there that money for our, our employees that we run through, their flex accounts, we account for, for them. Dental, we're self-insured in our dental. You can see that our fund balance is up to a hundred and ninety-one thousand, so actually, this fund has been working very well for us. I think when I first started here, it was right around a hundred, so in the last, you know, six years, it's gone up about ninety thousand. So that's, that's terrific news, we won't have to increase any dental rates in the near future. Student activities, you see about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is raised every year for use, for supplies and equipment for student activities. And of course, down at the bottom, you'll see the OPEB trust, that's the money that's been set aside for OPEB or other post-employment benefits, and it's mainly insurance, health insurance, that's given to our, our employees as severance. Once they hit a threshold of being here a certain number of years, the district helps them pay their insurance up to age sixty-five. So that's what that trust is for, and it really helps out, you don't have to take that money out of the general fund. So, with that being said, I'm looking for action to go ahead and put this revised budget into our system.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Ma, discussion? I have one question, Bill, when you talked about the WMAP money, that was money that just came in and went out. I mean, you said that...
Yeah. We had about thirty-eight students that generated that two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and we received those dollars, but then we turned around and made a payment to WMAP for tuition for those students.
Same.
So it was just a washout. But you'll see that, you know, overall, when you get your, your CAF for next summer or next fall, when we actually get it done, you'll see that the beginning budget to our revised budget, we're gonna see a drop in our revenue, and that's a big piece of it.
I do have a question. Are we providing transportation?
We are not.
Because it's open enrolled?
It's open enrolled, and the legislature is actually allowing Minneapolis and Robbinsdale to come pick those same kids up using desegregation dollars, but it doesn't run through our funds any longer.
I just wanted to point out that, I think you said that, I don't, I don't see it up there as the health and safety balance...
Oh yeah, this is a little more summarized, it just won't all fit, fit on the sheet. Health and safety, you'll see, again, is, we're spending a little more than we're receiving. That's really something that happens pretty much every year, because what happens, we do the projects, and then we levy for the dollars the next year to pay for the projects. So on a regular basis, you'll see a negative fund balance, meaning, 'cause we're usually running a year behind.
Right. So even, so the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand decline is not really something that, we will make that up next year?
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing to be concerned about. The levy, and when we talk about that again now September, things go around, it seems like the years go around faster every year, but there will be a levy adjustment to take care of that in the levy.
And I just want to comment, I, I'm glad that our fund balance is actually increasing a little bit, it's not decreasing, the unassigned, so as I've said before, I think we do need a cushion for unexpected things, so this, this seems to be going in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, no further discussion or comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next up on the agenda is board topics. So you wanna have anything for board topics?
Would I, I do, please. When I spoke earlier about what we attended, I forgot to mention that I did go over to the Banfield Lac Center for the Arts. They have the student art show going on. The information is posted on the website, but it's through March fifth, and I wanna say it's Tuesdays through Saturdays from ten to four, but I encourage everybody to get over there, there is some really great art on display for you guys to check out.
Conferences are coming up.
I have just a couple quick things. It's been brought to my attention that we have three wrestlers that will be attending this state tournament. I believe it starts this weekend, so good luck to all of them. Just a little teaser for everybody, there's the, MDE released a report on graduation rates today, and there is some exciting news. I think we're gonna ask staff from the high school to come back and present on that, but there is a short blurb on the, the district's website, really exciting. And then the only other thing I have is just to the other board members is that, check your emails, the superintendent evaluation should be out, and you should have your stuff, so I think we're looking for March eighth to have those done by, so, and that's all I have.
Guess I would encourage the community here, we do have one more election on April fifth, so learn about the candidates, and it's coming up.
Good point. Anyone else under board topics? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-seven.